All right, we call this meeting in order. Let the record show at six thirty-one. Please rise for the plug allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who called? Craig here. Dolphin here. Snyder here. All right, I have in front of me verification of proper meeting notice is being posted. Bring us down to the action of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections to the agenda this evening?
There.
All right, hearing none, I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Craig will move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Takes us to the minutes from the Personnel Committee meeting that was held Wednesday, February twelfth. Are there any noted changes, corrections to the meeting minutes?
I'm going to make that motion to approve the Personnel Committee meeting from February twelfth.
Okay, your second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to approve the Personnel Committee meeting minutes from Wednesday, February twelfth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. This meeting, the first one, is seven oh as well. Takes us to the action of approving the minutes from the regular meeting from Wednesday, February twelfth. Any noted changes or corrections here?
I'll move to approve those minutes as presented. Cummings, your second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Ms. Cummings to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Finally, the action of approving the minutes from the closed session meeting on February twelfth. Any noted changes or corrections here?
Cummings will make that motion to approve that meeting from February twelfth, the special board meeting.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to approve said meeting minutes from Wednesday, February twelfth, in the closed session. All those in favor? Oppose. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Moving right along, we'll get to the board reports. First, we will turn the floor over to the rest of the school to give us a student report.
All right, so the juniors took the ACT yesterday, and each student had a goal to score within their predicted range from the pre-ACT. Students that meet their goal will get their name and drawings for the gift cards and also start their senior year with open campus for term one. During the ACT, the freshmen took a field trip and went ice skating at the Sun Prairie Ice Rink and then to the Botera Gardens in Madison. The sophomores went to Craig's and the campus tour of UW-Whitewater, and seniors went to Epic in Verona and then the Veteran Museum and State Capitol. The pre-ACT tests students in English, reading, mathematics, and science and provide the prediction of where they will score on the ACT as a junior. Sophomores take the pre-ACT next Tuesday, and freshmen will take the pre-ACT next Wednesday. These tests start at eight AM and get done at eleven-ten AM. The forward exam tests students in social studies. Sophomores will take their forward exam next Tuesday after the pre-ACT. Career fair. All sophomores are attending a career fair at Watertown High School next Wednesday from nine-thirty to eleven AM. Over two thousand students are attending this career fair, and over sixty businesses will be present for the students to talk to. Gatsby Gala. Last Friday, all juniors as well as seniors in AP Literature took part in the Gatsby Gala, where students took the time to present their projects about the great Gatsby and all things nineteen-twenty. All the students dressed in theme and had a great time. Solo Ensemble. Two weeks ago, around a dozen lot of those students traveled to Belleville High School and competed in a regional solo ensemble for band and choir. Congratulations to Ben Yagorchi and May Brokner for qualifying for state. FFA. I participated in the prepared speaking contest for the district LDE FFA competition. I placed first and am moving on to sectionals for LDEs on April seventh. CDE competitions will be held on March twentieth, and Waterloo is traveling to UW-Platfield to compete in a variety of events, including floriculture, a mechanic, and dairy judging. Our FFA week review. We had a very fun and successful FFA week, where students participated in many fun activities during flex, like utter toss, hay bale toss, and finishable lyrics. We also raised money for a chapter through Kiss the Cow, where Mitch Erbach and Mr. Sebel had to kiss the cow. Visual Arts Classic. On March first, about ten Waterloo students went to Carroll University, where they competed in Visual Arts Classic. They were able to compete in a variety of events revolving around art. Congratulations to Guglio Molina Chapiero and Chloe Winter for qualifying for state. Winter Sports Wrap-Up. Boys hockey ended their season with a first-round tournament loss to Fond du Lac Coop six-one. They ended their season with a seven-seventeen record. Girls basketball ended their season with a first-round tournament loss to Markinville seventy-six to thirty-six. They ended their season with a two-twenty-three record. Girls wrestling sent Harmony Schaefer and Michaela Bell into sectionals, where Michaela qualified for state. She wrestled Thursday afternoon and Friday morning. She lost both, but she still had a great state experience. Boys basketball ended their season with a first-round tournament loss to Markinville eighty-two to forty-seven. They ended their season with a two-twenty-three record. Boys basketball finished their season by sending eight wrestlers to state competition. Jacob Brady just missed a trip to state by placing fourth in their respective weight class. Spring sports update. Spring sports start on March tenth with track and field, followed by softball on March seventeenth and baseball on March twenty-fourth. Any questions?
Any questions?
When do you find time for school?
That's a great question.
Any other questions? Thank you for that report, and congratulations on your presentation, where you placed first.
Thank you.
Thanks, Murso.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving right along. We have Ms. Kwame and Ms. Cummings to give us a report on the WASB legal conference that they recently attended, so you guys have the floor.
Yeah, again, I know I said it at our last meeting, but if you get a mailing from WASP with a topic that you think would be interesting, I can't encourage you enough to participate. They put on a good conference and usually have a great array of speakers. At this conference, we had two track options that we could participate in, so there were a total of nine different speakers that presented over the course of the day. I just had a couple of notes from a few of the presentations we went to. So one of the ones we went to was communication during a crisis, which I thought was a really well-done presentation about engaging your team preemptively and being prepared to handle communication during a crisis. One of the statistics that they shared with us is about ten percent of all students will experience some sort of sexual misconduct during their school years. Ten percent. It's a huge number. We are bound to experience it at some point, and I mean, it was a great presentation about a school in the state of Oregon that had had a pretty significant event related to sexual misconduct in their teacher-student interaction and all the debacles that happened as a result of poor communication externally and internally. And so it just really opened my eyes to the fact that we have a policy, but it's pretty vague. I looked at our communication policy.
And I think to that note too, like the crisis, like I think before going to this with Susan, like I thought it was like a major event, like major, but it can be very small and still be a crisis because of how we communicate or how we come out with the information. So I thought that was very like eye-opening, like wow, there are a ton of schools that are, again, ten percent, that at least ten percent of the school has that happen, so.
Yeah, one of the things they said is it's not if, it's when your district faces this challenge, really, with this statistics. And these are combined statistics from the U.S. Psychology Association and school districts. And so it was sound effect, so I just went back to look at the literature because I wanted to know that that was a true statistic, so I reported it to you. And one of the other things that they offered to us that I took note of is that if you're called in the results of a crisis, they strongly advised against not using the phrase "no comment" because it really impairs that you have more information, you're just not willing to share it right now.
And you'll never be willing to share it, is pretty much what "no comment" meant, is that you're not ever going to get that information.
So their suggestion to the group, which I put in my notes and I wrote down here so I could give it to you, was especially if it's a media person approaching you, to really honor the fact that they're looking for information and to just say, "When is your deadline for your publication? And can I get your contact information for the correct person to get back to you with the details?" You're still not giving any information, but you're honoring the fact that they're trying to do their job, and you want to be able to provide them with factual information. So I just thought that was a great sentence to have in my back pocket if I ever needed it again. And then another response that they offered to us is that we take any and all allegations very seriously as a district, and additional information will be available to you as soon as we can provide it. So just keeping in mind that you don't want to offer a generic, pocketed statement, so you want to be able to say that you're part of a solution without really giving any information.
So ironically, there is an assembly bill that's moving forward now, AB seventy-four, that addresses that communication during sexual assault, so we'll be watching that. That'll give schools some new mandates for how we are required to communicate with that needs through, so.
Which is probably being pushed because of the nearly significant students that are impacted.
Sure, there are all the topics.
Another session that I took some notes on was related to open meeting law. And it was interesting there, right, there are now, there are no case law presentations related to text message associated with open meeting law, but it was a huge source of topic at this conversation. And I mean, they didn't really have a ton to offer except to be cautious in your personal use of your device related to school board communication was really my key takeaway. One of my other key takeaways from this presentation was how many districts have gone to a board-assigned district device for board communication just to make that streamlined source of information kind of compact in one way. There were a number of districts that shared that they use a district-issued Chromebook for their board agendas and their board packets and for email communication so that they had it on a separate device, was separate from their own personal things, so that they could speak to that, something I had not ever thought of before this conference. Public participation during board, that was a nice topic I made notes on. And my key takeaway here was my concern that we've written a policy that speaks to how we will invite public input at our board meetings, but we have at times allowed the public to interject on topics outside of public input, and that is in fact a policy violation, and someone could file a complaint related to that because they weren't given notice that they could present information also on that topic during the board meeting. So just something for us to be cognizant about, that we would have the right at any agenda point to add, that we would entertain public comment during it, and it would be wise for us to do that if we anticipate we would allow public input during any specific topic. And then my last point of interest that I went to for my last conference or last session was about conflict of interest. And there was a lot of information presented to us during this session and lots of reference to state statute around conflict of interest. But really, if anybody has any kind of direct receipt of benefit from something we discuss as a board, simply abstaining from the vote doesn't really cover you in regards to conflict of interest. There can actually be criminal litigation put forth if somebody were to receive greater than fifteen thousand dollars in benefit to themselves or someone directly related to them as a result of decisions that we make. So there are some statutes that they really referred us to and encouraged us to consider in regards to our concepts of interest as a board. Kevin O'Carroll, did you have any more?
No, I think that's great. You really did cover it.
I said Sarah, these notes, this is all the voiding cases.
We got to pick which ones we wanted to go toward with, and like I said, it was a really good source of information, and we have so many contacts that I guess I didn't know about either, you know, through WASBA and, you know, every single person that presented was like, "Let me know if you have any questions. Contact here." Like you could really reach out at any point if you ever had a question regarding anything to do with the school.
Yeah, all of the speakers included their contact information in their slides. So if you have follow-up questions or wanted additional content, they were available to answer questions.
I highly recommend next year people going because, like I said, it was really beneficial.
Okay, well, thanks, Paul. Do you know, I know the WASB has a ton of resources on their website, excuse me, do they publish or do they record any of these? Do they make them available through their website or?
I got an email with a link. I think we probably all got this same generic email recently this week that had a link to this conference, and then a link that, from that link, that could connect you to some of the slides. I don't know if all of the slides were available.
Sure, what they presented.
Yeah, usually at the very least, the resources are available, and sometimes they're recorded, but.
I did not see anybody recording any sessions at this meeting this time.
And none of them finished their slides either.
No, yeah, it was like halfway through. They were very eager to take questions from the group and to not just follow the platform it had created, so there was a ton of dialogue between speakers and participants.
And there was a lot of like board members and admin, you know, so it was like a mix. So you could really hear it from like both sides and get the questions that people really have for that. So it was, it was really, like I said, very beneficial in being, you know, only on the board for almost three years. Like I, I didn't know half this stuff, so it was, it was really good.
And it was beautiful venue, too.
Yeah.
Where was it?
Al Cart Lake.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, there's no question, other questions, but yeah, thank you for sharing and attending. It's a good reminder that there is a ton of resources on their, their platform, on their website, et cetera, and all board members have access to that, your school board curriculum. All right, we'll move into administrative reports. We'll start off with Mr. Bartel talking about the Community Connection luncheon here before.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. I'll be, I'll be brief. I just want to give the board an update. I know we touched on it a little bit on Monday night, but last week, Tuesday, we had a community network luncheon. I just want to update the board on what that looked like. So we're really looking at now with our career-connected learning with Scott Carr and our work, how we can get businesses into our school more and our kids, our students, out into the businesses to really focus on growing not only our local businesses and getting our students involved, but giving them that experience of the real world and life after high school. So I, I was able to gather about a hundred emails probably of local businesses, colleges in the area. And we had last week, Tuesday, a luncheon. We had about thirty representatives from different businesses in Waterloo, which was fantastic to see. Working with Scott Carr, he said that was the most that he's seen at a event like this, and this was our first one. And what we did at this is we really just talked about the work that we have started working on here in Waterloo, specifically more at our high school and what that looked like. And the community, the businesses were very interested in how we are approaching this, and we talked a lot about variable skills. And we had Mr. Chopin came and presented some of the work that he's done. We also gave some other examples of what we're doing in the classroom. And, you know, by the end of the meeting, I had a little exit ticket, a little survey, and out of all those businesses that were involved, I think we really made some strong connections. And I'm very impressed with just the businesses, the community in Waterloo, of how interested they are in partnering with our school to have our students come out and work with them or to come into our classroom and provide real-life problems that they are going through and having our students help solve them. So our next steps with this is sometime in early April, we're going to have another meeting, and they're really going to have their hands on how we can really increase our youth apprenticeship, work experience, getting our students, getting them into specific classes in our building. Again, it will just provide, and more, the goal is to get more engagement with our students, to give them more real-life application and experiences as well. So again, I know Mr. Craig, Charlie was there, and I don't know if he wants to give any feedback. I can't see if he's at the meeting right now, but where the camera is. But, but he was there, and again, it was just a great turnout, and we have such a strong community and a lot of businesses that I wasn't even aware of until I reached out to a lot of these people. A lot of neat opportunities for our students that we can really connect with.
Great. If it was a high schooler, I'd say it was a nice lunch. And but as a businessperson, I'll say there was some good interaction. A certain amount of joy in the room to realize that there's a real effort made towards greater student engagement. Obviously, well-known, the lack of engagement across the country. So it was refreshing to see that the involvement's pleasure with the initiative, just to put it simply. So very glad I took the time to come.
Mr. Bartel, do you want to share, I know you shared it the other night, but maybe again, just for the sake of the public at home, do you want to share the numbers for requests for youth apprenticeships and work experiences and how that's transpired over the last couple of years and what you're thinking for next year? I know it's a little early, so it's preliminary, but.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. I want to say three or four years ago, we probably had six students that were taking advantage of the youth apprenticeship program. And youth apprenticeship is for juniors or seniors. And what that looks like is they're required by the state of Wisconsin to get four-hundred-and-fifty hours over their course of being in youth apprenticeship, whether it's junior, senior year, or only senior year. So students leave our building, and they're required to work. They can't go home and just hang out. They're required to go work, whether it's a half a day or a block every day. Next year, we're increasing that a little bit more so they have the opportunity to leave a little more frequently. So we had, like I said, about six students three or four years ago. This year, ran about twenty students that are in youth apprenticeship. And again, so it's out of about a hundred-and-twenty students. Next year, we have forty-two requests of students to join our youth apprenticeship program, which again is showing that we are trying to have our students understand what they want to do and where they want to go without having to take a gap year after high school. So they're able to get right into the businesses, the workforce, whether it be at the local QuickTrip, working at the PIG, the youth apprenticeship, working in a factory at Van Colton's, at Auburn Ridge. So we have a lot of people stepping up, a lot of businesses helping. So we're almost doubling that number for next year. Not, not all those kids will probably go through with it. We're hopeful to get in the upper thirties. But again, four years ago, we're at six to eight students, and now we're looking to be in the upper thirties. So really focusing on, again, a third of our students go to a four-year school, maybe a third to a, a, a two-year school, and the rest get right into the workforce. So we're really looking at trying to even out those numbers where we're not just focusing on our students at our four-year school, which we will continue to do and challenge those students, but also we really weren't focusing on those students looking to get into the workforce, and that's what our goal is.
Thank you for sharing. Any other questions?
Great job, Mr. Bartel. Tell Mr. Kopee thank you, too.
Thank you. Thanks, Sean. Sounds like your hand's busy there, or hands full, I should say. We'll move to Christine Zeman to talk about Family and Community Nights for the intermediate and middle school.
Our seventh and eighth grade held their annual curator event.
Sure.
Their annual curator event on February twenty-seventh. This event is where students are able to research and share artifacts about their own personal passions, and then they create an exhibit to share their final project. Parents and students were invited to vote on the presentations, and Mr. Merkel awarded the following students with prizes. So in seventh grade, the best artifact was Willow Nowett. Best question was Mackenzie Gordon. Best design, Tegan Griswold. And best overall was Kayla Jacobson. In eighth grade, best artifact was Ozzy Bybee. Best question was Zoe Davis, and best design was Emma Crave. Best overall was Leila Hush. So the Family and Community Engagement Night was followed up by a field trip to the Milwaukee Museum for the eighth-grade class on March fifth. And the Intermediate Family and Community Night will be held on March twenty-fifth from five-thirty to six-thirty, and students and families will be able to participate in activities such as trivia, board games, and basketball. Everyone is welcome to attend. We invite you to attend, and the teachers are crossing their fingers that this year there will not be tornadoes like there were last year. We had hurricane tornadoes. So you are all welcome to attend. Any questions?
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right, we'll turn it over to this Deacon to talk to summer school preview.
Nope, now.
Now we can. Now we can.
All right. So Sarah Deppe and I have been super busy. We're putting, we're just starting out with our figuring out what it's going to be for summer school. We have about the same amount of teachers as last year, about thirteen teachers are willing and able to teach summer school this year. We always are looking and always putting into our hand, our course guide some new and improved ideas. The teachers are super creative. Some of the highlights this year are for kind of our older students. We are seventh through twelfth grades, so Jess Diggs is really wanting to promote her strength and conditioning class in the morning and really working hard on that. We have some teachers who want to create some camps for basketball, things like that. Oh, Megan Burns is adding in some STEM classes for our seventh through twelfth graders in the area of forensic science, anatomy and physiology classes, local ecology, and biotech. So, and so she's planning to do some of that work this summer, so that's, that's very exciting for us. We have to, we're adding in a class for our students with personal reading plans to make sure that we don't have the same kind of summer slide and really try to help our students to be, you know, better leaders for the summer. Let's see, what else? I think that looks pretty good. We're, like I said, we're just in the beginning stages. It'll probably open for signup right after spring break.
Any questions?
I was literally just thinking about when it was going to open, so thank you for letting me know. Because I was like, did I miss it?
Not yet. We didn't miss it, so. So again, we're super excited. We're still trying to get everything. We're trying to add in a couple other camps so we can extend our summer school. We have a basketball camp that's pretty full every day of summer school from twelve-thirty until two. So now we're trying to find some teachers who might want to try another camp. We've been throwing around ideas of maybe having a volleyball camp, you know, those days, or we've even talked about bowling camp. Oh, we're just really trying to think of maybe a nature art camp. So we're trying to figure out a way that we can maybe extend those three weeks until two o'clock. So kind of doing the lunch and then extending, not just with that basketball camp, one week of the summer school time, but maybe all three. So we're still working on those things and trying to figure out what else we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll turn it over to Ms. Armitra to talk about multi-level systems of support, the overview and...
Wonderful. Good evening, everybody. All right, I'm just gonna present my screen to update the board. We recently had a district meeting and let's see if that works. Is that working okay? Battery should be good for a bit. We got plenty of time. Here we go. Perfect. All right, so sorry, as I was saying, we recently had a district meeting and we did have some new members at our committee meeting. And I just thought this would be a nice opportunity to update the board and kind of give an overview of where we've been with our multi-level systems of support and where we're going. And so just to kind of anchor everybody back into this idea, the MLSS is really a framework which we use to ensure that every student gets the help that they need to succeed in school. There are three major components to a multi-level systems of support and that would include high-quality instruction, using data, and collaboration. When we talk about the multi-levels, we're talking about, you know, basically three tiers of support. The universal, which we are giving all of our students, and then the targeted support for students that need it and that intensive support. And that goes both ways for students that might be struggling or for students that might need that extra push. When we look at multi-level systems of support, we're looking at all the needs, so there's sort of three buckets. Those academic needs, behavioral needs, and then well-being, which we refer to as that social, emotional, or mental health. So when we look at those three buckets, since I've joined the district, just kind of going over where we've been. When we look at MLSSA, which is the academic supports, we've really put our efforts into those collaborative teams at each level or the PLCs. We've worked really hard on our priority standards in grades K-8, common rubrics. We participated in a framework training and analysis, looking at those standards-based grading, and of course, recently the ACT 20 training and student support teams and really getting that system in place pre-K-12. When we look at that behavior supports part of MLSS, we've done a reboot this year in pre-K-8 for PBIS. We've done a tiered inventory fidelity for PBIS at those levels. Our behavior guidebook has been revamped and again, we're continuing with those student support teams. And then when we look at the well-being component of our system, looking at the six components of mental health, a couple of years ago, we did the SHAPE assessment. We implemented SCHOOL CONNECT at the high school level. And then this year, we implemented the SABER screener, which is a social, emotional, academic behavior risk screener that you've heard us talk about a little bit this year and more to come. And then again, looking at those three components, just to connect the dots for the board as to where we're going and some of the supports that we've been lucky enough to have in our district. Obviously, in the academic area, working on the ACT 20 personal reading plans, increasing those Tier Two interventions. We've heard a lot of readiness work we've done with Scott Carter. And then in that behavior bucket, again, we're gonna continue our PBIS work focusing on behavior and implementing evidence-based strategies. And again, we're getting some of that support through funding and grants through CISA II and through the ESC grant. So that work is woven into that there. And then finally, in the well-being bucket, as far as where we're going, we're gonna do a reassessment of the SHAPE, which is basically a school health assessment and performance evaluation. I would invite, if there's any interested board members, I know Sarah participated a couple of years ago as part of the committee that did the SHAPE assessment. After doing that assessment, then the team determined an area of focus and then for the next year, we did sort of a plan-do-study act in that area. And so we'll be doing that again on our in-service day. And again, that is supported by Project Aware. We've got, again, some resources from DPI and CISA through some different funding that's helping us out with that, so we're pretty happy to have those pieces. And that is my overview on that. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Bartelt? Not hearing any. Thank you for the comprehensive report.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, we'll move into next item of business, the approval of bills and vouchers. We have presented the packet, the treasurer's report, superintendent listing of disbursements through February 28th, and the district receipts for the month of February. Are there any unanswered questions that remain on any of the reports that are presented?
I'll read them all rather thoroughly and I will move for approval of all three.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay. The motion on the floor by Mr. Cray, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve all three of the reports, the treasurer's report, the superintendent's listing of disbursements, and the district receipts for the month of February, and that is the roll call mode.
Cray, yes.
Yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Fari, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Yurkis, yes.
Yurkis, it passes on a seven oh vote. Are there any announcements this evening? Right along, is there anyone who would like to provide public input? All right, we'll get into new business. Action item A, staff positions. As presented in your reformer packet, we have a number of positions here. Looks like eight volunteers and then two retirements and three employment positions. Any discussion regarding the staff positions?
I was curious about the Spanish teacher. What level will that be teaching?
That will be middle school ESAL and high school Spanish. Am I right?
Yes. Spanish one and two.
Spanish one, two, three, and hopefully if we get numbers, you know, we could potentially have AP Spanish as well eventually, but next year, we would not have any students that would be doing that. We're hoping that a live person will really raise the numbers in the Spanish program.
I'm not familiar with this person. Are they new to the district? Yes.
Yes, we had moved to a virtual construction, yes. Very lucky to find a person.
I'm hoping to approve the staff positions as presented. Cummings, the second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Quomby, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the staff positions as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, or she carries on a seven oh vote.
Could you, I abstained from that one, throw up.
Okay. You like to abstain from all or for the one person listed here?
Just the one person. I would approve all of them except for the one that I would like to abstain for.
As noted, so...
The baseball volunteer.
Baseball volunteer, the last thing, Dolphin.
As a state.
All right. Moving into action item B, the certified works, staff, excuse me, certified staff work available. Again, listed in your packet. On the details, the recommendation is the board approves the work available as presented. As noted, this does not preclude the district from making changes at a later date if the need arises. Any discussion regarding the certified staff work that's available?
Do you walk us through any changes that you noted on that document?
Yeah, probably the biggest, well, this represents the same number of staff for next year that we have for this year, but there's always sort of a shuffling in the elementary, or at least over the years, it seems like the elementary is where we do some of the shuffling. So as those couple smaller classes go through, we, you know, change where we need three sections versus where we need two sections. So we're anticipating next year in first grade that we'll need two sections and then 4K is a little bit of a guessing game because we don't always see those kids until right at the last minute, even though we try to recruit and communicate ahead of time as much as possible. And there's still some potential consideration about where, you know, we'll need the resources, but that, at this point in time, that's our best guess for where we'll need three sections and two sections. Otherwise, everything else, I think, is exactly the same.
Can I ask just a question? Like, the numbers in the elementary school are lower than our current high school class sizes. Do we see a change in that number typically over time or are we anticipating this drop in enrollment to continue?
Well, that's a very good question. We do tend to pick up a few kids from the parochial schools, either in middle school and/or high school. So some of those numbers will go up when parochial schools transition over here, but we are in a declining enrollment situation, so, you know, for example, like in first grade, we have a class of thirty-seven. You know, I doubt that will ever be a sixty-eight like our junior class. They might pick up a few kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion on the certified staff work that's available? And I would look for a motion.
Go ahead, Jack.
I'll make a motion for certified staff work available.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurkis, seconded by Ms. Quomby, to approve the certified staff work available as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries on the seven oh vote. Takes us to action item C, administrative support and support staff work available. Need discussion here. We've got the data in the packet or electronically. Any noted changes or items of discussion here?
Yeah, so much of that instructional aid piece just depends on the students in those programs where we require instructional aids. But again, we're using our best estimate at this time for what we need. It stays pretty level throughout the year, but we watch it and we have a little too many we need to make adjustments and if we have a little bit short, we make adjustments, but this is our prediction at this point in time.
And the open position there is related to the retirement.
Yeah, that's Kathy's position, which you have for retirement tonight.
Questions? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Cummings, the second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the administrative support and support staff work available. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries on the seven oh vote. We go to the action item D, the selection of board canvassers and setting the date for canvassing meeting on April 1st, the April 1st election, rather. As noted, we have a school board election on the April 1st this year and it's recommended that we appoint Lori Billingsley and Sarah Deppe to join the board member to serve as the board of canvassers for the spring election. And set the meeting for Monday, April 7th at 2:00 PM in the district office. It's also recommended that Desi Estrada serves as an alternate for the board of canvassers. Now, we have a unique situation where our clerk is up for reelection, so I guess it would be advised that we select another board member to serve on the board of canvassers. It doesn't preclude Sarah from also attending, but as speaks to the election, we should probably select a new board member. Is there anyone willing to step up and available on April 7th at 2:00 PM that can serve in this capacity? Well, he's raising his hand. So we have a volunteer, Mr. Cray. And again, Sarah, you're certainly welcome to go. Any questions here?
Yeah, both Sarah and Susan are running out of votes, so I anticipate it being uneventful, but it's still part of what we have to do. And does two o'clock work for everybody?
Okay. Cut into my noon time now. All right, I will look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Mr. Yurkis. Just a point of clarification, as you're approving, I'm assuming you are also approving Mr. Cray to serve in this capacity? Okay, any further discussion on this before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries on the seven oh vote. Action item E, parchment transcript retrieval program. As noted here, many colleges no longer accept email transcripts from the district. So Mr. Bartelt has found, believe a service that's called parchment, to deliver those needed documents to many colleges. Are there any questions in regards to the parchment transcript retrieval program? Clarification needed.
It looked like there were two payment options. Do we know which one we're planning to go with? There's really not a lot of...
Do you think there's some feedback we need?
Go ahead, Sean.
Bill, I was just gonna say it might be, I think we're looking for feedback tonight from the board with parchment and just, I know discussing the board packet, but we, for example, we had a request today from UW Madison from a former student of ours for a request and they would not accept email, they wouldn't accept, you know, any verification besides it has to be electronic or we have to do snail mail. So a lot of schools use parchment already in the state of Wisconsin or across the nation as well. And our admin assistant, Melissa Brees, did all the hard work with this and the map for it and has used it in a previous district as well. So I don't wanna tell Mr. Henning on what you were saying, so you hop in and I can answer other questions, Mr. Henning.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there's not a lot of difference in cost from one to the other, but, you know, this is something that typically alumni are requesting, so when they go to their universities, usually they're on the hook for the cost, so it's just a preference for what you wanna do. It's probably something we can pass on, it's not real steep.
If we go with the option two, just for clarification, so we pay the implementation fee and then the year one fee and then there's no additional charge, the alumni would just pay for their request? Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, basically, it's the alumni fee that we would charge for five dollars for alumni for a transcript would offset and would get a little bit more money, not a ton, from parchments for that cost. So right now, all our students use ZELLO for their current transcript, so all our current students through their senior year, through the early part of June, everything's free. We use a secure way through ZELLO, which is a program we use. After that, though, when they graduate, they can't use ZELLO anymore. So this would take place of that and the determination would be, we keep it free for alumni and you see the cost break down there, otherwise it's five dollars for alumni and you can see the cost break down there. And then he would, the district would then, anything at five dollars... And then he would, the district would then, anything at five dollars would come back to the district.
What type of volume do you see yearly? How many requests?
Good question. It, it ranges, I know for sure when you look down at verification requests, which are. A little more expensive, as they say that on their verification forms. They, I'll touch that an, an edit a minute, Matt, but the. Transfer requests, you probably get anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty a year. It varies. And then verification forms that verifies that. That our former students went to Waterloo and graduated from Waterloo. Right now, there's no cost with that. Most businesses do charge thirty-five, or most schools charge thirty to thirty-five dollars for those, and that's just a gift.
We lost you, Sean.
Yeah, I muted myself there, but I'm at.
We gotta share in the fun. So the third-party verifications are fifteen dollars per.
Fifteen dollars, yeah, so that's fifteen dollars, and we get about seventy of those third-party verifications. Throughout the, a school year, so that would be something that we would make money off of, and then also the. The five dollar fee, and again, we have anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty requests, and it varies.
Any other question regarding the pricing or? For Mr. Bartelt?
My, I guess our recommendation from the high school, just because of the cost. Like, it's up to the, the board and, you know, what you wanna do, but doing the extra. Waiving the fee for alumni would be kind of our recommendation, but if there's a five dollar fee that is common, when we talk to. Parchment, they say school districts honestly are fifty-fifty whether they charge five dollars. They do have some school districts that charge ten or fifteen dollars for a transcript, so that the district makes more money. So it will offset its cost anyway when we do the verification form, so we probably will have a, a little revenue from that, even if we do it free for alumni.
Who's in charge of collecting the five dollar fee?
I'm sorry, say that again, I cut out.
No problem. Who is in charge of collecting the five dollar fee?
Uh, it goes to, parchment organizes it all and then it, it goes through the. So they do it all online and it's all, I don't know, credit card and then parchment has it and then every quarter they give us the check for whatever the verification was or the transcript.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't making anybody here busy collecting the five dollars.
Right.
No, no, they would all be on our website. We don't direct people to our website when we get those calls.
Okay, so it looks like there's two options, one we can, option one is transcripts are free for the alumni, option two, the alumni pay either five dollars. Plus a surcharge. But for clarification, Sean, third-party verifications are paid under both options? That's correct?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
And that's not charged by, like, former students, that is, the company pays for those verifications. And that's very common for, about ninety-five percent of schools charge verifications. We just haven't in the past.
Okay.
Also move for adoption of parchment, option number one.
Okay, got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig to select parchment transcript retrieval program and use option one.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. Kwame. Any further discussion before we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on the seven oh votes, and we'll be going with option one. Raises to action item F, the CISA V service contract for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Additional information within your report packet, it's recommended that the board approve the CISA V contract for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Again, it's noted, the services will be determined based on what is outlined in the student's IEP for this upcoming school year. Any questions in regards to CISA V contracted services?
This is the same as we have in, in effect today. It varies from year to year based on the students, but yeah, we've worked with CISA V for a very long time and. They, they're able to offer us some services that CISA two can't, and so our collaboration between those two organizations is what allows us to serve all the kids.
Year-over-year costs, is there a change?
Um, you mean in terms of like the per unit cost?
Yeah. Or the total projected, and again, it's a projected cost, but is it similar to what we've paid the previous?
It, it fluctuates.
Yeah.
I think this year it's actually downs, so it, it does fluctuate.
I'll move to approve the CISA V contract. Cummings to second.
Okay, got a motion on the floor, Ms. Kwame, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the CISA V service contract for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on the seven oh vote. Moving into action item G, the bus contract. Susie is passing out additional information in regards to the bus contract as we're up for renewal and. Susie, flat Brian, will have the floor to explain our options regarding the bus contract.
Yeah, so the document I just gave you is a summary of the total cost form. Got first page is Cobusen's proposal coming next year. Second is Go Right Way's proposal, and the third is what we're, our twenty-four, twenty-five costs are. So I requested proposals from five companies, we had two give us a bid back, so. Dossman, first student, and Lambers did not give any cost. I'll let you look at that for me, Susan, second.
So the sheet you just sent, gave us about ten indifference, is that kind of?
The, um.
What we're looking at?
The breakdown of the actual cost.
Yeah, like the regular estimation, so like if you line it up, it's about, like, the total's about ten.
It's, it's fairly similar, it's just some different, you know, different variation on it. Um, that third page also has what the increase was from the twenty-four, twenty-five contract to the twenty-five, twenty-six, puts around three percent increase. Overall, it's a little higher.
The twenty-twenty-four, or excuse me, twenty-four, twenty-five price, what's, what's our all-in cost, as we've got told us here before, what's this year's cost?
Well, I don't know.
So you don't have it?
I, I don't, yeah.
A rate of cost of ballparking? What do you think this year lineup be?
Probably about. Four fifteen, I think, I was doing an average estimate. Four fifty usually around, four fifteen. So this was taking, the, the way I calculated this, it's about a hundred and seventy-three days, um, they kind of average co-regulars, because that varies each year, then they all redo. So I kept that consistent while comparing apples to apples. I can do that real quick for this one.
Again, I mean, with looking at it from twenty-five, twenty-six to twenty-five, twenty-six, like, it's very. It's almost like pretty similar, what? Seven thousand. I, I mean, I guess what is like. Your recommendation is your recommendation to go with?
Are there some difference that Cobusen or Go Right Way?
The other sheet that I gave you has some kind of differences in the contract, and. Typically, Cobusen's subject for year pricing is laid out a little different. Versus Go Right Way, Cobusen's has. Is multiplying the previous year's cost type of national two-price index. The percent change for the preceding twelve months, coinciding April first and March thirty-first, if you are immediately proceeding a contract year for which the change is being implemented. Notwithstanding the foregoing adjustment for contract year shall not exceed six percent nor be less than one percent. And then Go Right Ways is. Utilizing the three-month average for January, March of the CPI. Or we could do a flat rate of four percent annually.
And do they not cost, do they not charge cost per mile over the thirty-three miles like buses?
Correct. And there's a little difference in the fuel surcharge there. Cobusen's has three fifty for diesel and three dollars for gas and. Go Right Way just had a flat fuel at three dollars per gallon. And the elimination of the route increase. Cobusen has, you know, we, right now we have six route to beyond the five, the other five route to have a four percent increase to cover costs and Go Right Way has. It's just redistributing the fixed cost that they have for those, which is kind of hard for us to know what that would be, that is a little bit different there. For cancellation days, Cobusen has up to contracts based, the hundred and seventy-three days of transportation. Cobusen will invoice the base rate at eighty-five percent for a minimum of a hundred and seventy days of normal dealing operation. And Go Right Way has a minimum of a hundred and seventy-three transportation days. And will be charged for the hundred and seventy-two days regardless of cancellation. So not knowing what CPI is, I took the MAPS rate we could have, the six percent versus the four percent, and tried to factor that out. Again, we could choose CPI for Go Right Way and then we could, you know. CPI for Cobusen, we did a different result, but. I, I wanted to factor something out, 'cause then you have to wonder what it was for me to hear.
Well, I reviewed what came out from the school board packet, and that leans more heavily towards Right Way than. This proposed difference showing here tonight. But I think our best money is to change Go With Right Way from what I can see at this point. I'll leave it there for discussion rather than make a motion at this point.
So if anybody wants to see the full proposals, I have those here, they're about fifty pages each, that's why we didn't necessarily give those to you ahead of time.
Pretty good.
Um, Susie's tried to break it down into three or four summary sheets. You, you know, you're, you're in a good position, Cobusen has been great. I, we hear good things from Right Way, from Marshall and Columbus, so that you've got two good choices. Um, you know, competition obviously drives price and it would have been nice to maybe have a few more people bid, but you know, the bus business is pretty tough right now and so. I think people have all they can, they can handle what they, they have, so. It, I was surprised that year one, you know, you almost have identical cost. Um, there's, when you extend it out a few years, you do start to see some, some changes with cost, so it's really. You know, you have a chance to save some money, but you also have to switch service, which will not be fun for our families and kids, because there's always growing pains with that, so.
Both contracts would be for a five-year term?
Correct.
What do you think is the biggest challenge with, with switching a bus service for students and families?
Well, we have a service that, you know, has established drivers, they're local drivers, they know the families, they know the roads and. Principles by name and, and all those things where, you know, when you change a company, it's. That's all new and there's some growing pains with that. But, you know. It, you know, the previous year, we were up CPI and the couple of years before that, I think it was right around CPI, but prior to that, you know, we had. Been negotiating about five years of zero percent increases. You know, which was very fortunate for us, that's what allowed us to keep our budget balanced for a number of years. But those days are sort of over and, you know, the increases that you're seeing from both companies. Um, I, I would guess is pretty standard across the industry and it's gonna cost the school district money. You know, you, we've had that conversation about health insurance, you're seeing it for bussing, you're seeing it at all costs across the board. Which is why that operating referendum discussion continues to circle back on us every time we have these things to make a decision on.
Correct me if I'm wrong with projections, everything's based upon our current bussing minutes?
Yeah.
Number of people riding.
Right, it's, you know, there could be an extenuating variable that would change that, but things are pretty consistent from year to year.
Any other discussion? I would point out, you know, our next action item is, is talking about bus transportation as well. Depending the outcome of what's discussed or talked in action item H could severely affect or leave this unchanged. So I would, I guess, caution the board on it. If we take action here and approve this and the next item might change that pricing. I don't think that would be a good way to go about it, to look at all the costs. I would interject that.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll just state the obvious, you know, you certainly, if you're ready to make an approval tonight, you can. We also know you've just got the numbers in front of you tonight, so if you need more time with it, we can table it and hold a special meeting or invite contractors to come back and answer questions. Uh, we do have to let them know fairly quickly, but we still have, you know, another couple of weeks, so.
So we would need to prove this prior to the next board meeting?
Yeah, I think we have an April first deadline.
I know it was a struggle when you changed the last bus company, kind of for yourself though, which is wild, we threw it. Did we, as we've been with Cobusen for some time, did we get any references on Right Way or any other district's feedback, I know that they're used locals?
Yeah, we talked to Columbus and Marshall.
Well, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in savings over five years is nothing, that, that's a chunk of change. If, if, yeah, if this were closer, I'd all be for staying with Cobusen for all the reasons that we just talked about, I, I would share with you on this.
Should we?
Brian, just so you know, I'm here if you have any questions.
Scientific lesson is that?
Should we have additional discussion about the next topic item before we make a motion in the floor?
Think we should.
Yeah, I agree.
Any questions for? Yeah, three minutes.
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Yes.
Why don't you go ahead and leave it alone? You just had to say you wanted to leave it alone.
I will so move to come after this issue after we've resolved whatever.
The next letter is you.
H.
H, yes.
Okay, got a motion on the floor by Mr. Fire, table, action in regards to the bus contracts until a discussion and/or action is held on action item H. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right, so that motion is made by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Cummings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion, that action item table, raises to action item H, uh, which speaks to age eligibility for bus transportation. Within your informed package, you have our current handbook in regards to bussing?
Yeah, it looks like we haven't really. Is that right, like nineteen ninety-one that we did these minutes or nineteen ninety-four annual meeting minutes? That we've actually looked at this policy?
It's kind of in place for a long time.
Okay, that's, well, that's, I actually asked to have this put on and the reason I had is because a couple of parents in my. Okay, that's, well, that's, I actually asked to have this put on and the reason I had is because a couple of parents in my neighborhood. Contacted me that they were notified after this school year started. And they have one child that is, you know, younger than fourth grade and one that is in fourth grade, so they can no longer ride the bus. And so their younger kid, the younger child can, can ride the bus, but the fourth grader cannot. And I didn't know that that was our policy, I was like, that's interesting because maybe I know nineteen ninety-four. It was a lot safer of a place to walk home, but I know I would not allow my fourth grader Harper to be walking home at age nine. I just, I just wouldn't allow it. And that's what, two miles? And they come by my house every single day and so I guess I would, I would look to update that and maybe make it even sixth grade. Like that you're going eleven, twelve years old, I think that I would be happier with that, but fourth grade is way too young. Especially with, you know, the world we live in today, I don't think that. I would just never allow it and it, it kind of uprooted parents and they had to take off and they had to figure out a plan B because. At the middle of the year, we told them, sorry, we can't bus your kid anymore. When they stop at the house.
They, well, number one, we could amend it such that if there's, I know there's several in the same stop.
But that's, I, I mean, it's.
Right, but why did this happen?
No idea.
Do you have any idea why it happened in the middle of the year?
Yeah, it was a miscommunication between us and the bussing company, obviously it's our policy and those kids were allowed to ride. Early on in the year and then when we did our audit of riders, we found that there were people riding that shouldn't be, so the phone calls went out and. That happened in October, so.
So this would have been an issue, would we have kind of noticed this and done something, audit wise?
Well, we, we get complaints about this every year because like Sarah said, there are kids that are riding and then all of a sudden they can't ride and then oftentimes. We're stopping at a house and one kid can get on and one kid can't, yeah, it was unfortunate that, you know, we had to sort of change direction in October, but.
How far do you have to be to ride the bus? My kids never rode the bus, I mean, we lived three blocks when they were little, so.
Yeah, state statute says two miles unless they're in a designated hazardous area, which the counties law enforcement designate the hazardous areas, so we do have some of those like. Portland actually is in within two mile radius of school. McKay Way is in within two mile of school, but those are designated hazards areas, so we do transport those kids.
I live in a hazardous area?
We have hazardous, I was gonna, that was one of the things. Simply, yeah, Portland, sidewalks.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's very harsh on.
Yeah, so.
So what are you looking at?
I, like I said, I mean, I looked at, I thought about it, like just personal thought and was like, if I had to have my daughter ride the bus. I could until she was in fourth grade and I work from home, so I can go and pick her up, but a lot of parents don't work from home, so. I, I would say like give it until sixth grade at least, then they're eleven, twelve years old, they're a little bit older. I just think nine years, eight, nine years old is not old enough to have them be walking, because I mean, you cross. The main road here and then you have to go up and around and down and so, yeah.
How many potential routes would that have?
It's nine.
Well, five or six are up, so we got our bus pool coming back.
Not, not the one that these kids are on. And that's what I'm saying is like adding from four year, four, fourth grade to sixth year, sixth grade, that's two years.
Well, what kind of differences do you have, any idea in terms of cost, what kind of difference that's gonna make?
Well, it, it does vary from year to year, of course, because not all kids live in town, not all kids are living in the country and some. Get a ride, some don't, so it does vary, but it's been a little while since we've looked at the numbers exactly, but. If there's some tipping point where it would cause us to add a route, which would add about seventy-five thousand dollars to your transportation cost, so. You know, are there room for a couple more kids on each bus? Sure, are there room for ten? I don't know. And that's on where those kids live, it might be okay this year, it might not next year.
And when you speak to opening it up to sixth grade, you're saying for everyone who qualifies to ride the bus?
What, yeah, I mean, that's.
Not just with siblings, but if you're gonna open it up to families with siblings, but you're not gonna open it up to other families who have kids that are.
So if I just add one sixth grader?
No, I mean, that would be the cutoff, if you're in, I'm saying if you're in the route of being two miles away.
Right, so.
That sixth grader will probably walk and has walked, that's what I'm trying to say, fourth grader, probably not. I don't see a ton of fourth graders walking to school right now and I mean, I live five minutes away, so. I'm, I maybe have the numbers pulled to see exactly how many families that we had to notify this year that. Was that that cutoff of that fourth grade cutoff that had to be notified that they couldn't ride the bus and maybe they have a sibling that is still riding the bus? And see, I'd be interested to, to see actually how many would be added on.
Is there a reason that we didn't write the policy to extend through the fourth grade at least to take kids through that early elementary? Period, so that when they start intermediate middle school, maybe that's when the transition occurred?
Yeah, I haven't seen, wasn't here in nineteen ninety-one, but my guess is it's a numbers thing.
Like I wonder if we just extended it through that, like at least then we could say we're just taking care of those elementary kids through bussing, through that age group? And parents then at least know going in, okay, when we get to intermediate middle school, we need to make a different plan for our kid in terms of transportation.
Because do you?
Because I think that through the fourth grade, like there's kids still really little, right, and they're not thinking ahead to that.
Many.
That part yet. But I, I don't know.
I noticed our virtual, Timmy has his comments on.
Sanchez, you wanna?
Well, I think originally you were referring to perhaps the family on Gale Road that has an older child and a younger child. That's on route six, that bus could probably take a lot more kids than it does now, most of the kids on that route actually get off at. Little Bear's, which is actually closer than the house on Gale Road and then that goes out way out the country and has a few way out there, so. Most of the buses could take quite a few more than they have, I think this originally came up because. Mrs. Beacon's husband who drives route five was having some issues with some of the kids on route five and so they took a look at it and said, oh, maybe some of these kids. Aren't supposed to be riding in the first place.
So I mean, we can, like I said, we can definitely not look at tabling this and look at the numbers to see how it would really affect. Our numbers, maybe we do push it up until through fourth grade and you're going into, you know. Intermediate.
More thoughts? We've got sixth grade.
Fourth. Thank you. I mean, I don't know, one additional grade of what, say fifty kids on average? But we're only talking about all those fifty kids, the number of kids that live.
Within two miles.
Right, within two miles.
Yeah.
Of one age group that just can't be, is it?
Very many.
Maybe most, it's gotta be ten kids, right?
I have so little bus experience, I don't know, but like I agree with you, Bill, I would think with the size of our, our grade levels to add one more grade level. Even if we dispersed it across five different bus routes, we're not going to add ten kids to every bus route because not all fifty kids are eligible for the bus. And we just looked at our elementary numbers to know that that's kind of where we're sitting for the next several years, so.
I, I tend to feel we should expand it to.
Total fourth grade?
Yeah.
Culture, I think it.
Inclusive for the older kids to ride the bus, because if they're under the two miles, it's not going to be all that many kids. Get on, the buses have capacity for sixty-six or seventy-two kids or whatever it is. You've just got to tell some of the bullies you're gonna have to slide over for the last mile.
That is true to a C. I know, so if you do add the fourth grade, then you potentially still have a family with a fifth grader and a third grader that one can ride and one can't.
Yeah, I know I feel a little bit differently now that we talked about it some more. If you, I, I don't know how many families that that is, but that could expand it quite a bit more because now you're actually talking about more people on the bus. I mean, it isn't, it isn't like a relevant thing completely. That might be a whole other ten kids again, because now you could be talking about kids that aren't just, you know.
But ten kids.
Fourth graders, you could have all the fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, all the way up into high school too, right?
No.
And that could be a lot more kids.
What you're thinking about that, like one grade, fifty kids, that's the whole grade, not all of them are gonna, not.
No, I, I agree, but you've got a whole situation where you could, you know, I don't know how many families out there have kids that are wider apart than age, but like me and my brother, we were nine years apart. You know, so when he was in third or fourth grade, that means I could then run, ride the bus all the way through high school, so now you could be talking about a decent number, because I have no idea how many families. It's impossible to even check that out.
We're saying add like. One year.
Yeah, you're gonna have to put a limit on it, you can't just let a third grader, a fifth grader, and build to fourth grade and that's, that's all being it, but you can't be dictated every family situation. Like you go to sixth grader or a caterer, or a caterer ride the bus.
I think it would be logical, one would first agree upon the principle, right, so what are we asking? I think we need data to make a decision, right, instead of speculating. So I've heard Susan, and correct me if I'm wrong, I've heard potentially expanding this to fourth grade.
To that period, I think I would, I would sit on it, expand it through fourth grade.
And that's the cutoff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if there's other kids in the family or whatever. So fourth grade, so I think we should ask the, if, if board members would agree on that or if you want to also explore the sixth grade, but I think we give. Direction of the administration to try to put together numbers and then see if this is going to add a large cost, if it doesn't add a large cost, it's obviously might change your decisions. If it adds a bus route, maybe it doesn't change your decision, but at least you know making a decision what it's going to cost the district. Is that sound logical? Are you clear on what we would be asking for?
So we're gonna add the fourth graders?
Take it all the way up through fourth grade and then it cuts off.
You could just look at how many families you had to cut off.
Well, no, that's not true because those are only the families that were riding that shouldn't have been, there were lots of people that knew the rule and just weren't riding.
So if we just extend the current policy, would be altered by extending it through fourth grade?
Yeah, the point three of this, reviving less than two point zero miles from school and our early childhood through third grade is the way the sentence currently reads, right? Just extending that sentence to say fourth grade.
Fourth grade.
And that's where that is.
And then as kids enter school, like it's early conversations with those families, like we only take care of the kid on bus through elementary school. You, you need to be prepared once you get to intermediate middle school.
It's just no tires on, it's very bad.
Yeah. Like I said, no bus experience in my life, so.
So that'd be effective immediately then, or?
No, we're asking you to gather that if we change that policy to reflect fourth grade.
Okay.
Can we gather how many people that would impact? And then if it's significant enough that it's going to add a bus route, we need to know that before we make a discussion.
And when do you want that information back?
We would like to have it before we approve our bus contractor.
I found that we probably need to have a special meeting.
And the fourth grade isn't gonna cost you anything. I can tell you now, fourth grade isn't gonna cost you anything.
You're hearing it from a bus?
I'm just telling you, it's not gonna cost you anything, at least not while I'm cutting out of mouth somebody else without designing.
That's the input of somebody, may use or may not use, so. Is it, are you able to pull that together that quickly or is that a?
Yeah, we can get it.
Is the board agreeing that that's the direction we'd like to move?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like that in motion form or you believe you have, we won't take action on this, but we need more additional information, we can also table this. Is there a motion to table this item as well?
Cummings will make that motion to table. The age eligibility for bus transportation until we get further information.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Kwame, to table the age eligibility for bus transportation until the board receives additional information. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on the seven o'clock. Moving right along, discussion item I, the nineteen fifty-five sewer line at the high school. It's been repaired, hopefully it lasts for some time, they're gonna further get investigated in April, they have the contractor that was selected. And provide additional options for a more permanent fix for the nineteen fifty-five sewer line. So I want to be aware of that, any discussion in regards to the sewer line from nineteen fifty-five?
It seems to me just got that pile of soil moved off of there recently and now I see they're out there digging again.
Well, yeah, it was a few years back that we had to do some repairs and now this is the same line again that we knew was old and. Probably not gonna last very long, so we're, we're gonna, you know, have it, run the camera through it so we have a better understanding of what's left. To fix, but at some point in time, we're probably gonna have to bite that bullet and fix that line. It's the line that runs from the cafeteria basically out to Monroe Street in front of Pigly Wiggly. So there's a little pile of dirt out there, if you ever saw that on your walk, walk in.
Is this a gas line or is it, given the age?
I don't know if I answered that.
Does it handle like half of the school or?
Actually, it's, it's pretty minimal, it handles like this wing here with the pool, kitchen and then some of the high school classrooms.
They're gonna provide television, television reports on some of these?
Yeah.
Look at. Those are the options, not digging, but like, is that a bike?
And yeah, I believe there's, those things are all on the table, yeah, we'll have a better, take a closer look at it.
Yeah, I mean, once they're removed through the table, so you can, you know, it's usually typically cheaper than digging.
Yeah, that section from the cafeteria to the sidewalk is pretty accessible, they're just, have some lawn there to dig up and from the sidewalk to the road, you're. In the sidewalks and roads and parking lots and. Expensive stuff.
Any other discussion on the nineteen fifty-five sewer line? All right, moving to discussion item J, the school van, you have in your former packets a couple of options on van pricing. It's noted that the. It's noted that the district may need an additional van, which would, uh, in turn provide savings in regards to providing additional transportation through a busing company. Any questions regarding this, uh, school van purchase? The potential for a purchase, rather.
So this is adding a third van then to our?
Yeah, we're not necessarily asking for that tonight, but, um, it, there's been a number of occasions this year due to our student population right now that we, um, have been real close to needing a third one to transport kids. Um, we have some kids, IEPs, that are coming up that may add transportation. So it's just something to get on your radar. Obviously, you know, it's, it's tough to get that going after the fact once the IEP's been put in place. You know, we need to start executing that within a pretty short time window. Um, and you can't just necessarily come up with a van overnight, so this is something that we wanna get on your radar.
What are we used to making for right now?
Transporting, uh, special needs students sometimes.
From where to where?
Um, sometimes it's to their off-site programming or placements, or sometimes it's to and from school based on the needs of the child.
I see, so.
Field trips.
Different, different for kids.
Versus taking like the regular bus.
Correct.
I assume.
They had like the volleyball team went up to.
Was there one option that you guys are preferring over the other one?
No.
Better bet versus the rest of it?
The more traditional van versus like the white van, the higher, or more traditional? Um, I wouldn't mind looking at just a couple other van options. I didn't notice a huge change in price when we did state pricing versus just looking online. So I would like to look at some other van options to get the best fit for us, but still stay in that dollar range.
And if we purchase, I'm sorry.
No, okay, we're just, we're getting close to needing it. We've been talking about it probably a year or two, but it's getting a lot closer where we, we may need it. So we really want to bring it up.
Have we purchased from either of these vendors prior?
Um.
Previous purchases?
I feel like the Econ won't win, is that right? I believe we purchased many other vans from that. Isn't that right, Brian?
Any other questions regarding to a potential van purchase? When do you think you'll know? I mean, is there a drop dead date where you're gonna come to us and say, hey, we need to make a decision here?
It's hard to say sometimes. Those things are pretty cut and dried overnight and sometimes it takes, takes longer and more discussions. We just wanna get it on your radar.
Like a twenty twenty-five purchase? I mean, you're calling six, your price is gonna go up and so.
Yeah. Or you can get one before the tears.
Alright, uh, just moving right along, your discussion item K, April reorganization meeting. Again, it's just a note, the board will have a second meeting in April after the election and reorganize, designate the WASB and CISA two delegates. Designation of depository, legal counsel. Regular, regular board meeting times in the official newspaper. Second meeting will be Monday, April twenty-eighth. And again, we'll list committees, so you can send over your committee recommendations to myself prior to the meeting and they could be put together. Any other discussion in regards to the April reorganization meeting? Hopefully that works for everybody that night. Alright, discussion item L. The date for the superintendent evaluation. Can be settled on some dates in either April or May for completing said evaluation.
So I know there were some questions about, um, the tool for evaluation. I did forward Matt some resources that he could, uh, share with the board about the tool for the superintendent's evaluation. I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at those yet or not, Matt, but.
I have looked at those. I've also received some samples from some other schools. So I will put that all together and distribute to board members. Uh, it's been a revised format as we've discussed the last two or three years about some of the redundancies in our current evaluation tool. So we put it out for you guys to decide if you wanna alter what we currently do and take it from there. I'll get those out by the end of the week.
I know last year we did this evaluation prior to a board member leaving the board in order to gain their input. Uh, we don't have anybody probably in that situation this year, but I would suggest that that's a board who should be on that same schedule so that in the event we are in that situation next year, uh, current board members would have an opportunity to participate in that evaluation. Makes sense to have current board members do it rather than brand new board members participating in that process. So I would suggest we do it sometime in April. But like our normal April meeting, like April ninth? Just put it on that one.
Wanna add it to that agenda on the ninth?
I think that's a good idea.
Because everyone's already telling, planning to attend, right? So we'll just put it on the tail end of that meeting. Alright, I will make a motion, moving to a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen twenty-five, parent one, C, E, and F, as listed in your packets and posted publicly. Is there a second for that motion?
I will, I will second that motion.
Okay, as a roll call vote?
Curry, yes.
Bobby, yes.
Dalton, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Harvey, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Eric, yes.
Alright, motion carries on the seven little vote. It's eight oh seven, we will take a brief ten minute recess and allow cameras to turn down and we'll be in a closed session. Thank you.